Gentlemen, we're live.
Thank God.
Better be than dead.
A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this day pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated February 29th, 2024, and reading as follows: "The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, Dear Commissioners, A regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024 at 5:00 PM in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk." Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner View.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Moya.
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson.
Here. The Delta County Board of Commissioner meeting is called to order. Special orders of business. If you would join with me, please, with us, please, in having a moment of silence for Sandy Karen, friend and employee to this county and loved by many, passed away unexpectedly and unfortunately. So if you would, please, a moment of silence. Thank you. In the words of Harry Truman, this one's gonna hurt for a while. All our deepest condolences to her family. We have special orders of business today. We had a Commissioners informational workshop scheduled for today with our VSO. That has been requested to be put off until the first meeting of April, and wishing to accommodate, we did that. Anybody with anything else, please, any Commissioners with anything else, please advise. And I just dropped my pen. Gentlemen, if you have nothing, then I think we'll move on from the informational workshop. Approval of the minutes of the meeting of the county board of 2/20, 24?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron. We have support by Commissioner Peterson. Just, nope. Melner?
Yes.
We have support by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? All those in favor of adopting these minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would carry. Approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes to come before the commission?
Yes, I'd like to add one item under new business, number five. It's the acronym is M A E A P, MEAT they call it. It's pertaining to the Michigan Agricultural and Environmental Assurance Program. For discussion, I would like to put that on. Item?
Item five, very good. I would like item six to be closed session regarding the recommendations or the information brought forward by council. And so I would also like to switch general public comment with that, or put general public comment ahead of that closed session, if it would please the commission. We've done that typically many times in the past, so in case something does go along, we don't have a crowd sitting here.
Well, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Barron.
I will support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion?
Can you repeat number five for me, please?
Yes, it's the MEAT, discussion on MEAT. Would you like the acronym?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Barron?
It's the Michigan Agricultural and Environmental Assurance Program.
M A E A P. Say that three times fast.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. So we have, we have an amended agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We do have an agenda for this evening. All right. Presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded.
Yes, they're included in your packet.
That information is included in your packet. Additional information, gentlemen? Oh, I would need a motion to put them.
I will, I will make a motion to put them on file.
Moved by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would carry. Okay. Reports of standing statutory and special committees, as well as others.
Yes, that's also included.
The gentleman, that is in your informational packet. Any discussion on that? If not, I need a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner, to file the reports of standing statutory special committees, as well as others. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have Cheryl Corbiere signed up to talk about, or discuss, if you pass that back to Nancy, please. Agenda items. Ms. Corbiere, please. You have three minutes, ma'am. Welcome. Yes?
Cheryl Corbiere Escanaba, and I would like to address the VSO that's on the agenda. And I don't know what your plans are regarding this. I would like at least one of you to make a motion that he have a full-time assistant hired, and it be a county employee paid by the county. And I think that is something that is very necessary. I don't know what he has asked for. We have so many veterans that are becoming more elderly. The need is very great. I don't believe he needs a secretary. He needs somebody who can be knowledgeable in the same items that he does, and the need is very great. We have seen people come forward and ask for help in other departments. And I don't want this to be disrespectful, and it's not making anybody feel bad. I have been to finance committee meetings where a member of the court system came and asked, they begged for help. They were so frustrated because they could not get things done. There was a person that left the department. They had a grant to hire somebody as a consultant. It was denied. The person that was asking for it was in tears because they were so frustrated. Finally, when the judge came to the board meeting, it was granted. The same has happened at the airport, where it took so long to get somebody to be hired there, and they needed an assistant there. We don't want there to be big problems, like has happened at the airport. We want there to be smooth transition. We want to have this position filled. And I hope that you really address that, in addition to giving him money. We all agree. There's not one person here that would not agree that nothing or not enough is being done for our veterans. And we need time to work together. We, let's work on the issues that we all agree on. We all agree on so many things instead of arguing. And it doesn't matter whose idea it was. This has been talked about for the veterans. At least two years ago, it was on the platform when Kelly brought it up, and she fought to get an assistant for him at that time. This, this is inexcusable that this is not being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, very good. Nobody else signed up for comment on agenda items, but that does mean we won't let you talk if you want to talk about an agenda item. Sir? How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Joe Kaplan, Ford River Township. I first came and addressed this commission, I think it was about a year and a half ago, when you were considering extending the Delta Conservation District contract with the parks for another 10 years. And what I brought to the attention of this commission was something that I had noticed in the rec plan for Ford River Township that gave me pause. And I'll read it again, because I think it's worth noting. "One of the most frequent community survey comments requested that the local community be granted access to the picnic area, boat launch, playground, and beachfront at the Obie Fuller Park campground. This is not a request the county is willing to entertain, as they do not have the budget to improve facilities and maintain a campground and day use area along the lake. This is the only expansive lakefront area open to the public within Ford River Township." That's quite a statement, isn't it? "At the time, the commission here was supporting a ban of day use on the lakeside of Obie Fuller Park, because in the words of Mr. Mattson, if we had a failure of the bathhouse there, it would cost $800,000 to repair it. At that time, myself and other commune concerned members of the public reached out to the DNR and the trust fund to find out that 40 years ago, this county made a commitment to a day use area and a campground at Obie Fuller Park. Low and behold. So all of a sudden, all the concerns of why we couldn't go swimming at Obie Fuller Park, because there wasn't coast guards, or lifeguards, and why we had to stay on the other side just kind of vanished. And then, after that, we sat down and did interim measure to give us a chance to look at how Obie Fuller Park should be managed. And that included out just taking out two campground sites. And I was on that committee, and that's the proposal I met, or proposed. And at the time, Mr. Mattson says, 'State will never go for that, because I talked to so-and-so, and this and that, and everything.' And you know what? It worked. Took out two campsites, and that was it, so that we could come back and reevaluate it. But we didn't reevaluate. What you guys have done is done away with advisory committee, and then Bob Peterson's going around and trying to figure out where to put a new parking lot and pavilion. You're not asking the community what they want. You're deciding for us. And I'm telling you, you're running into a problem now, aren't you? Because you know that you have to do SESC permits in Eagle, and now you're gonna reach out to McBroom's office. And I'm telling you, you should ask the community what they want, not what Rory Mattson wants, but what this community wants. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, general public comment on agenda items, please. Very good, we will move on. We have committee reports. We'll start with the administrator's report.
I'd like to start off with sending out our condolences to the family of Sandy Karen. She was an extraordinary employee of Delta County, and she's been here since 2013, so she'll be greatly missed by all of us here. And due to these unforeseen circumstances, the position that is shared between Equalization Treasurer's Office and Building and Zoning will be assisting the Building and Zoning Department. I had Jack come up here just a moment ago and give me an update on how well she's doing over there. I've also been in contact with Mitch from Water Resources Division in Eagle in regard to the soil and erosion sedimentation control program. With his assistance, we are moving forward on securing the SESC agent. It was also brought to my attention from Commissioner Melner that there was a verbal agreement between Delta County and the townships of Delta County for a one-time payment for the updating of their zoning maps with the assistance from QPAD in December of '22. This is a one-time action, which was not resolved. I have spoke with Ryan Saucy from QPAD to bring the memos and quotes up to date, and I'll provide more information as it comes in. Anderson Tackman is beginning their annual financial and single audits for fiscal year '23. It was also brought to my attention with the claims and the correspondence in the newspapers, news, and social media. This audit will take longer than usual, since the information increases the risk of the county, and it will need to be mitigated by additional audit procedures. The class of 2024 Delta Force is underway. I attended the leadership day, which included information from DDB and Ms. Susan Roll. This information was given to us during the day and the relationships that are being developed are the sole purpose of this program. And I'm excited for the next class, which is Education Day, which will be instructed by Mr. Doug Lysenring, the Delta School Craft Intermediate School District Superintendent. And Commissioner View and I will be able to have a school lunch that day. And then on March 1st, the employees of the courthouse and emergency personnel attended a training put on by our emergency management coordinator, Paul Guyer, and Sergeant Grolow, our courthouse security. The training consisted of one and a half hours of lecture, a fire drill, and active shooter drills. The overall comments of this training was positive. We will be looking at conducting this training on an annual basis, due to the turnover and changes in the environment. Thank you.
I would need a motion to place Ashley's report in file.
So moved.
Spurt. I have a motion by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion?
I have a comment. On the audit, what's, what's different because of the newspaper, social media? I'm not gathering why there's so much extra to be done, and it's gonna take longer, so that means more money also?
Correct.
Okay, can you just give us a?
It's all the accusations that are being claimed against Delta County, the unethical, all the newspaper articles she's been following since the beginning.
So that's, that's like, has to be looked into individually, outside of?
It increases our risk.
Was there any money accusation? Well, yeah, I guess there was. Misappropriation, or?
Correct. Following procedures, policies, and such.
Okay, so that's quite a consequence for some of the stuff that's happening, then.
Mm-hmm.
What would you say is happening? It's the allegations of what's happening.
No, that's what I'm talking about, Mr. Chair. It's just, I didn't understand what that meant, and I wanted some clarification, because now I realize it's gonna cost more money because of accusations. Just like, you know, we're given information. If we know anything that we have to report on an audit form that goes to this company?
Correct.
And this is the same thing, because she heard it on her own. She's gonna need to investigate a little more detail, correct?
Yes.
All right. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Very good. Additional comments on the administrator's report? We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Finance committee meeting. Go ahead, please.
Yes, we met the 27th last week, and we worked on the Fuller Park situation, and also the soil erosion and sedimentation control agent. We have the, the fees worked out. Fortunately, we ran into a situation where at the zoning and, a building and zoning, passing of Sandy, Sandy Karen. So that twisted things a little bit here, but we have that in place, and there's further discussion, I believe, that's gonna take place at another finance committee meeting in not-too-distant future. And so what I'd like to do is just make a motion, have these placed on file.
All right.
I'll support.
Motion by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor placing these on file, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, opposed? That one would pass. Department head updates? If any of the department heads wish to update us. Sir?
Excuse me, Jack Smith, Building and Zoning Administrator. To start with, I would also like to send Sandy's family condolences. She was an extraordinary woman that almost worked diligently to a fault. She really took this job to heart, and it's, it's gonna be missed. She did a lot of things that nobody even knew she did until she was gone, and then they had to figure out what she did. So we are getting a handle on it. As Ashley said, Rachel Pascal from Treasurer's Office and Equalization is filling in. She's doing a great job under the circumstance. She will be with us, I think, three weeks to get us through the hump here until that position is filled. If I have it my way, she's gonna stay, but I always have it my way, so. To move on from there, I will be, I did cancel my, I was supposed to take the soil erosion testing last Wednesday, but due to Sandy passing, I did not. I put that off. I will be taking it personally from the Great Smoky Mountains on the 27th and 28th of March. So what else would you want to do on vacation right before state tests? Get that underway at that time. New truck update, we did get our new truck. I appreciate that passing along. It definitely was a needed thing, so we got that going. Update on building plumbing and mechanical permits. This time last year in 2023, for the month of January and February, we had 28 permits issued. This year, January and February, we're at 87. Now, we can, a lot of that's due to the weather that we've had. Obviously, it's been great weather, but it's not that much this year versus last year. So we're expecting a pretty busy spring. Many commercial projects are in the works now, so we'll get that done. Continued, we're trudging forward with Sandy. It was a little, you know, tougher, but we're keeping up, keeping on pace here. So we did have a planning commission meeting yesterday on the 4th. Got some things settled. Our next meeting will be going over the bylaws for the planning commission, getting that stuff tightened up a little bit, and issues that we handled last night, so that'll be getting taken care of. We'll be posting for the job as assistant administrator for building and zoning shortly. Jim Shappi has started with us currently as our building, or our plumbing mechanical inspector on a part-time basis. He's doing a good job under the circumstances. He kind of got built up, so he's, he's filling in for that. But we are gonna still look for a full-time plumbing mechanical inspector. The hangup is they have to have either refrigeration or sprinkler system licenses and a mechanical, which is not easy to find. Most people that have those are still up there working in the field making. But there's gonna be that person out there that wants to be here, so. Other than that, everything's moving smoothly. And any questions you guys have for building and zoning.
I know you've had a difficult time of it. We thank you for your service, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I have a comment. I thought at the last meeting, or a couple meetings ago, we, is that a part-time job, the mechanical and electrical inspector?
Mechanical plumbing, yes.
Okay, is that no benefits or anything like that? So do they, they kind of set the hours according to what they have to do? I mean, they can go in the evening if they want, or early in the morning, or anything in between?
Currently, so Chad Hammerstrom, our previous part-time, he worked on Wednesdays, which was a good day. We'll, Jim is doing also. He's doing his inspections on Wednesdays. And then last week, he came in on Friday morning. This week, I'm not sure when he'll, but he does his plan reviews at a different time, so it doesn't take away from his inspections.
Is that a set salary, or is that by hours performed?
By hours performed.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, that helps me understand how we can stay up with things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional department head updates, please. Any other? Very good. We will move on to unfinished business. Officer, we have, I know he's not here tonight, but I would like to have a discussion on this to somebody. He will be here in March? I'm sorry.
First meeting April.
Sorry, first meeting in April. He was scheduled to be here, but he requested, so people know, this board has been active, our administration has been active in meeting with him and finding out what he wants to bring it forward to the public. So Ashley, if you have anything else, or any other Commissioners have anything else to bring forward, please.
He was just at a Veterans Health Administration for our local veterans, so it was already scheduled, and that's why he couldn't be here tonight.
If I may?
Yes, you may.
I'd just like to say that right out of the gate, we were trying, we were working with him, and he asked us to hold off. And so it is not the fault of this board that nothing's been done yet. We're waiting for him to come in, ask us, tell us what he would like to have, and as soon as we have that, then we can start working with him to get what he wants. It's been our, at least been mine, and I think the majority of the board, or all of the board, it's been our intent to help him out as soon as he tells us what he needs.
I think things, as you say, have been done. And we've changed direction a couple of times at his request, so he really wants to bring a package forward to the public. And we'll be here at the beginning of April to illustrate it.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yeah. When did he come to us and ask for this? You remember when? Was I there?
Oh, yeah, you were here, I'm sure. It was earlier, almost, what, in the first month or two that we were on the board, he was in here and asking?
Well, I recall that, yes.
Yep.
But that, that was for a mileage, basically.
He didn't come to us for that. We brought that up, and he came as a result of our request to get his opinion on it. But he's been meeting with Admin, and they've been discussing the direction that he wants to go. And he was going to be here tonight to discuss that. Now, obviously, he had a prior commitment, so we couldn't do that. So we honored his request.
Well, all I was trying to do last meeting, and I requested this to be put on until action is taken upon it. That, that's why it's on there tonight. And what I was looking for is, when we have a finance committee meeting, the last time I made this motion, which I have in front of me right now, it was kind of assumed, which maybe I shouldn't, that it was gonna go to the finance committee as, as a starter point, not, not as everything that he needed, correct?
He did not want the $50,000 blank check written. He wanted to go the avenue of what you're pursuing.
Okay. Well, I wasn't giving him a $50,000 blank check. I was giving you authority to see what would best be needed for that department, because there's VSO in Rapid River. I'm trying to figure out what that's for. I went to Michigan Works. There's another VSO office there. And I'm getting confused on all these departments that are running for our veterans, which I support 100% because I got three people in my family that utilize this service. And I wanted to make sure that we get what he needs in small steps, to the extent where eventually this will be fully funded by the taxpayers in our county. And, I mean, if we have the funding for it, I would make a motion to give him everything he needed with that 1/10 of a mil tax rate now.
I don't think you'd find any argument from anyone on this board.
Let's do it.
Well, I want to wait until he brings us his request.
He brought that already there, Mr. Chair. That's what he brought. He needed that, that full amount in order to be matched with other counties and do the service that he needs to do for our veterans.
Let me defer this to our employee. Is it not his wish that he bring it before the entire commission?
Correct.
And so by waiting until the beginning of April, we would be following his request?
Correct. He wants to be here to introduce this. He just could not be here tonight.
Okay.
All right, very good. Anybody else, please, with the veteran service, so you know this is a good discussion, and we would be having it right now if you did not have a previous commitment. So we have a cliffhanger, and we're gonna wait until the first meeting in March, but I think you will see good things.
Mr. Chair, would it be inappropriate to ask that this go to the finance committee to see what the funding level would be at this point?
I don't know what he's gonna ask for.
It doesn't matter. Just, just.
It certainly does. I'd love to be able to say it doesn't matter, but you're, you know, they hang me from a yard iron.
No, what I'm saying is, basically, we only have so much funding. All the departments are understaffed somewhat. They need additional help. We need to divvy that up fairly to all the departments, is all I was looking at. And, and Ashley, you're, Ms., Administrator Young, I'm trying to use the right, I'm sorry.
You can use her first name if you'd like. It's all right.
Well, I'd like to, but I'm just trying to see where we are in the funding level, because at that finance committee, you're gonna be bringing all that information there. It could be, be done ahead of time. We don't have to know what it is, but you can.
Commissioner, with all due respect, I, I think everyone in this whole board respects your enthusiasm about this and shares it. I mean that. I respect your enthusiasm about doing the right thing for our vets, and I share it. It is on his request that we wait, and so that is my recommendation, that we honor our department head's request, and not be accused of micromanaging or anything like that. So if it would please the commission to note what Commissioner View's talking about, is a very positive thing, but anybody else? Very good, then. We will move on with our, I'm excited to hear what he brings forward. And with that, we'll bring it on to the finance committee, I'm sure, if necessary. All right, we have new business. We need to pay our bills.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the climates for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills is $1,600, or I'm sorry, $1,63,084.95, and commissioner expenses of $24.02.
Gentlemen?
I would move that we ask our administrator to pay the bills.
Support.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Peterson, supported from Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? Local call?
Melner.
Yes.
View.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Moya.
Yes. Out-of-county travel for MAC?
Just looking for approval for your out-of-county.
That's it. It was pretty simple.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-county travel for MAC.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner Peterson, to approve out-of-county travel for MAC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Thank you very much. Out-of-county? Out-of-county travel for UPACC.
Again, just looking for approval for out-of-county.
Do we have a sign, or a thing to sign for our bills, or is it? You have, oh, okay, sorry, we just need approval for that, so I need a motion for out-of-county.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
So the same thing, we have Commissioner Melner making the motion, Commissioner Barron, excuse me, Peterson supporting, additional conversation for out-of-county travel for UPACC. None seen, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass, gentlemen. Fuller Park Pavilion and Picnic Area Development, Mr. Weary. This will be your opportunity to ask any questions you have.
Steve Weary, out-of-county park manager. Got a little update, basically, just kind of the Fuller Park project. One thing we were able to do, and I was able to get Eagle out here yesterday, we actually were slated for, I think, last Wednesday, but we got that snow, so I had to cancel, I didn't want them coming up in that storm. I was very, very pleased that Mitch Coochie and Casy Abrams, the lady that came with them, very knowledgeable in what they do, they both work for Eagle, and it was an invitation to a site visit, is really what it was. We didn't apply for any permits yet, wanted to see if anything was plausible to be done. And one thing I did do when I interviewed for this park job and accepted it, I said that anything that I was going to be involved with, parks would be done above board, and when I gave my presentation about a month ago, I said that there was some permits that would need to be gotten, we had to have them before we would get started, and that was the reason for the site visit. I was very intrigued, I learned a lot, and in my findings is there's a lot of upland there, a lot more upland than there is wetland. Now, however, there's pockets of wetland, and therefore it would have to be delineated, and that would be what they would recommend doing. Now, we can take and fill up to one-third, we will never come close to doing that, but we did go out there, we GPS, we flagged out certain areas where we put a road approach, and take a road that's maybe 16, 18 feet wide, 25 feet long, I can go through several areas before I'll ever reach that third wetlands portion. When we get over to the northeast side of the park, it's pretty much all upland. And so the next thing that we would have to do is we would probably have to do an RFP, and we'd have to hire someone to delineate this property, that would be the proper thing to do. Recommendation is that that whole area should be delineated. Project was to go forward, there could possibly be room for bocce ball, volleyball, pickleball, stuff that I wouldn't be involved in expanding, because that'd be a little further out. One thing that Casey told me, she dug, she dug quite a few holes, when we got out there, there was already quite a few holes that had been dug, so there's no frost in the ground. And she did her due diligence, and probably about halfway through, she said, Mr. Weary, you have, it's pretty much assured me that it can happen. And she said, when you take out the proper permits. Can I bring Mitch up? Mitch Coochie is from Eagle.
Yes, yep, I have no problem with that.
If you don't mind.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Pleasure meeting with him and Casey, they are professionals.
Welcome back, sir.
And I understand that with any project, there's always going to be opposition, and for me, it's always what's in the best interest of the public. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for outdoor recreation, looking back at the trust fund 25 years ago, they actually did take and put money in to purchase nine acres. There was a pretty extensive plan, but they never did anything. Now, there's an opportunity for a day-use area that would impact very little wetlands at all, and our process, if we decide to do this, it's going to be minimal, as minimal as possible, it isn't going to go in to cut all the trees, and, but if it's, if it's worthwhile for the public, that everybody in the community is just all excited about this happening, a lot of the campers, but a lot of people that don't camp, just day-use people. All of the proper things would be done with the vault toilet, again, with electric and water, it'd be a great place to have a reunion, a picnic, birthday party. Appreciate you coming up here, Mitch, I don't know, if you guys have any questions for us, or if you have anything you want to add, if I leave anything out.
Commissioners? Just listen to Mitch first.
Just real quick, the delineation was suggested, because hiring a person with the proper credentials and background in identifying wetlands, the three featured wetlands, hydrology, soil type, and vegetation, will set out a really nice plan and identify exactly where the uplands are, exactly. It gets recorded typically by GPS, by those professionals, and it allows the Parks Department to plan out the least amount of impact that they can, and concentrate on the larger areas of the clearing to stay out of the wetlands. You can maintain those features in the park setting, it just, it's a tremendous help to be able to plan it appropriately, because it is a mixed area, there are, we believe, plenty of uplands, but we didn't explore every single square inch either, so it appears like, it looks like there's a viable project, there's a viable amount of uplands, but also want to be sure that, you know, we stay out of the, knowing that there is the potential for some impact, and through a permit application, that should be okay.
Thank you, sir.
What happens, is this going to be shut off at night, or, I mean, are groups going to be able to go in there all night and stuff? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, after it's all set up, is it going to be used, used by young kids for whatever, you know what I'm saying?
If this project moves forward, you know, and that's up to you, the commissioners.
Yep.
We're just doing our due diligence right now, and laying out all of the legwork right at this point, but yes, there would be a gate at nine o'clock that would be shut off to the public.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure, because our county forests, we had issues with that, and I want everyone to know ahead of time that there will be some type of restrictions at certain times of the season, or day, or whatever, or night, thank you.
The one thing that we are doing, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're doing all of the right, proper procedures, and by applying for the proper permits, I would really like to get the Eagle permit first, and then we would need soil and erosion, but if it's not a project that's viable of doing, then we just won't do it, but I think there's an opportunity there for outdoor recreation for everybody in this county.
Well, we just heard good news from, you know, from Mitch, I mean, I think it is a project that's not only worth it, but is very doable.
Well, I want you to understand, I didn't just go out there myself, and I wanted to bring some people that really know what they're talking about, to give me the advice of where do we go from next, and would be to delineate. Casy, she's going to send me a list of people that do this, there's a lot of them downstate, there's some in Upper Michigan. I just threw out this question to her, I said, approximately, what would it cost in your experience of doing this? We'll not hold her to any figure whatsoever.
Sure.
But she said about $750.
For a delineation process?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mitch said, it would be all GPS, it would be ribbon, and it would be GPS, and she could work off of the GPS for whatever they did, so that we can find the bigger areas, because we're not looking to just go in and take an acre and a half and just clearcut it and mow it down, we want to leave as many trees and everything there, and have the least amount of impact that could possibly take place.
As I understand it, we're dealing with less than a third of an acre, correct?
We're, we're going to, the project would be about an acre and a, maybe an acre and a quarter, but we can fill up to a one-third acre without going to mitigation, that's where it gets expensive.
Yeah, so the, the one-third acre comes in, if a project ends up filling more than a third of that impact, Cassie's the expert and a professional on that, I can deliver the message on that stuff, but the objective is always to minimize the impact.
Sure.
So if the opportunity exists, not to impact a third, that's, that's what the delineation and the overall planning process would go through, is to make that, that impact as minimal as possible. I'd also like to clarify to, Cassie and I went out on the project as a, you know, partnership with the county, trying to assist in the permitting process, that we didn't make any official determinations.
Understood.
The process goes through permit applications, pre-application meetings, things that get applied for, so Cassie would go out and verify the professional that does the delineation process, if they, if she agrees, and the Eagle staff agrees, then we say, okay, we can move on with that. If, for some reason, that delineation boundaries is not agreed upon by Eagle, it kind of delays the process a little bit, so that's why we suggest having a, you know, white individual, and we have a list of people, and there's all kinds of qualifications on that list, we don't support one person or another.
True.
Anybody that asks to be put on that list, we put them on there, it's that kind of stuff, so, yeah, there's some suggestions I don't have on the website, but it wasn't official determination, just helping.
Understood.
I'm sure you guys are getting off on the right foot.
Thank you both for your service.
I've got one more thing.
Yes, sir.
The next step actually is, is the guy to come out and do it, delineate, probably be about two months, because they want to come out when there's about three to four inches of green growth growing, that's part of their analysis that they actually study. And, say, if everything works out well, this project is basically scheduled to be finished by the end of October, it will not be usable this year, you have a nice project to open up to the public for 25, and if it works out that you guys want to go ahead with it, it's up to you guys, I will deliver you a fine project timeline.
And again, Steve, we thank you. Any questions for Mr. Weary, or Steve Vermig?
I just want to say, I appreciate what you've done, and I feel a whole lot better about this project today than I did a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, guys.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Baron.
Yeah, the, was, you suggested delineation, now it appears that's the direction we're going in here, is that, was that essential for this project to go forward, delineation?
It's highly suggested because of the type of topography it is, there is a lot of, like, dune swale type of topography out there, so there is pockets of wetland, I think the way we talk, discuss it is helpful, it does save a little bit of money on the permit. It is, it was highly suggested, because of the amount of impact in the area that is uncertainly high, so even, even the uplands, even just to make sure that is indeed upland, it was a, it's just a way to go. And Mr. Baron, you asked me a question last time I was here about the plant life, and being able to delineate a wetland outside the growing season, and my colleagues confirmed with me that that is pretty much the standard practice, because the vegetation type is one of the three determining factors if you can identify a wetland or not, so it is relatively, it is most of the time, that's.
Okay, another question, it's my understanding that you've received a number of complaints about this project?
We've had consult, calls, businesses, where, you know, just people talking about what plans are, and, you know, things are conceptual right now, just expressing the idea that there's development going on, we think there might be uplands out there, and again, we follow up on stuff as much as we can, just to, again, ultimate objective is we'd like to partner with folks to get the right things done, instead of.
We have the mic turned up, we can't hear.
Very good, ma'am, I apologize.
Thank you for that.
Could you, you go ahead, sir. You're just going to have to kind of pull it right into India.
This is not what I do normally, so.
No, it's okay, no problem, thank you for letting us know of that.
Yeah, thanks. Complaints, yes, concerned citizens, we get calls all the time from people. Why, make sure things are done right. Lakers often call on things, it's just the way it is, people are trying to get the proper things done for the environment and for the community, so, yeah, we react as much as we can to those calls, and, and possibly being here and being involved in the Part 91 process, it kind of got the ball rolling, like, we need to, so let's be a part of this and help out as best we can.
That's it for me.
Thank you for both, both of you, and I appreciate your time, guys.
Thanks.
All right, very good, much appreciated, and again, you come down from Marquette, so thank you, sir. Which is item five, now under new business put on by Mr. Baron.
Yes, again, it's NEAP is the call, but I'll repeat the, what the acronym means, Michigan Agricultural Environmental Assurance Program, I'll read a little bit here about what it is, it's a voluntary program through the Michigan Department of Ag and Rural Development, EMDAR, that helps farmers and foresters, forested landowners reduce environmental concerns through education and technical assistance. Landowners can get verified in four categories, farmedstead, livestock, cropping, and forest, wetlands, habitats. It's, it's a program that I have not personally been involved in, but I certainly know a number of them that are involved in this, and it's, one of the big components of it is its confidentiality, and the, it's been brought to my attention that, that may have been breached on the county, not positive yet if that's the case, but the, it's, this program is administered through the Soil Conservation District here locally, and it's my understanding that the, the chair of the Soil Conservation Board has directed the technician that, before they can work on any county project, probably about NEAP, they have to get clearance from that, that's not part of this program, it violates the confidentiality, the, and also, the, it's very discriminatory that we would have a agency that's supposed to be delivering this in a confidential manner discriminate against the counties as being a landlord, and I think that that should raise red flags for all of us, and I believe a letter of complaint and protest be sent to the EMDAR to fully investigate this, because the strength of the program is in the confidentiality, and this is, this is the start of a violation of that which could bring the entire program across the state into jeopardy, as I read here earlier, this is, this is working with farmers, and landowners with forests, to reduce environmental concerns through education and technical assistance, so I would.
You being the agricultural, I guess, expert on this board, what do you need? You just want to look into this, or do you want to write the letter and I'll sign it, or what do you need?
That, I would like to, I would draft a letter to be sent to EMDAR as a complaint and protest for this type of action by the discriminating against a particular landowner, which happens to be the county.
Is that being put forward in the way of a motion, or simply discussion?
I want to make a motion to that effect.
So, be, just for Nancy's preservation, could you repeat the motion, then?
Okay, I'd make a motion that a letter be sent to EMDAR protesting the interference and violation of confidentiality by the Soil Conservation District, specifically the chair of the board.
Support, you have a motion by Commissioner Baron, supported by Commissioner Peterson, discussion, gentlemen.
Comment, I, I have very little knowledge of what he's talking about, I have no supporting documents or other criteria that I can oversee, look at, or talk about with anyone, I will not be in support of this for that reason.
Commissioner Baron, do you have any response to that, before Commissioner Melner goes?
Uh-oh.
No, it's fine.
Mr. Melner?
No.
So we have, are you, so is there information you can bring from, we vote on this tonight, obviously.
Okay, there is a website, I do not have it here, Commissioner View, that you can look at what the program is. look at what the program is. And I have a brief right here, if you want to pass this down to him. I just read the first paragraph. I didn't go to all the, what the brief is on. No, you can have it.
Commissioner.
I'm just gonna take a picture of that.
Baron, I, I'm not, I'm neutral on this. I just haven't had time to understand what it is. And your first statement was, there may be. There's no actual evidence, but you made that comment. If I'm not correct, something like to that effect, that you're not sure, but.
Well, that's where, that's where a letter of complaint and protest go in, and then MDA, MDA will be into a situation where they have to make an investigation. Unfortunately, some of these things, pass this back to me. Unfortunately, sometimes these, these things come up internally and they don't get a whole lot of light of day. And this needs to be brought out, because it potentially can bring this program into jeopardy across the state.
Well, when you first brought it up for putting it on the agenda, it was discussion only, now we're making a motion and that on it. So, and I would have to read into this some more, too.
I've heard about the situation myself also. And, but in my opinion, I wouldn't mind if we bring this back up. I don't think there's a huge hurry. I think, let us get some more information and come back at the next meeting.
Are you willing to look at this and bring additional information back next meeting?
Well, I'd like to see it move forward now, but it's obvious that it's not going to. Because we have three board members that are restraining from voting for it. So, under that, yes, bring it up at the next meeting. I'll give these board members, it's two weeks from now, opportunity to look into this further. And then we can pass it forward from there.
Do you withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Very good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Could we have this information in time, you know, like, four or five days before the next meeting?
I don't.
I don't know if I'm supposed to do the research on it, because I would like to have what Commissioner Baron is talking about to actually see the ratings of what he's asking for.
He's asking for, can you have information?
Well, like I said, there is, I believe you go to the MDA website and look up MEAP, and it'll give you a ton of information about that.
But we're talking about people locally doing something that goes against what MEAPs is talking about? I'm just trying to figure out, what am I looking for?
MEAP is, MEAP's, the whole, the whole success of the program is based on confidentiality. And that's, appears to be violated locally here, and it's not a good circumstance for the program. And the program has been doing some fine work in the, from the environmental aspects across the state, but this is between the landowners and the technical assistance that they're getting. And I don't believe there's, this is the first incident I heard of where the, a member of the Soil Conservation District, which is ministering it locally, has specifically said one landowner, which being Delta County, is not to, the technician is not to work on what's taking place on Delta County's MEAP certified. And I want to back up, I should have explained this a little bit further, I'm sorry. The, Delta County's parks and forestry area were the first parks and forestry area in the entire state to be MEAP certified. So we are a significant unit that's been a part of this program for a number of years. And the, my understanding is what brought this about was the possibility, or what we've already voted on doing at Fuller Park. And it's not the decision of anyone of what the landowner is going to do with their property as long as it's within compliance of MEAP. And this is a violation.
A point to make, if that statement was made to the tech or the, if that statement was made by the Chair to that employee, and I'm not saying it was or wasn't, but if it was and we are holding off on this, are we putting the county in any kind of danger? The entity that we are sworn to protect? So, I mean, I'm not, it's going both ways. I understand your reticence, Commissioners, all three of you, but I would throw that out as devil's advocate, as a question.
Well, I don't know how MEAPs works, and I don't know if the Chair said anything. I don't know what Chair you're talking about first. You know, is it this? Well, you mentioned a Chair, so I'm trying to figure out.
It would be the Chair of this Conservation District.
That would be Joe Kaplan.
Please, sir.
And I'd be happy to address all these issues if you would recognize them.
Ah, you're out of order, please. Let, I.
But the other Commissioners might want to hear what I have to say.
I understand, sir, but that'll be a Commission decision. Please don't put me in this situation. I'm asking.
Well, Mr. Chair, can we, I'd like to move that we have Mr., the Chair of that board come up and explain this a little bit, because I don't think we're going to get that view in any things that we read, because it seems to be an accusation on.
I don't know if this is the format or not.
I don't know either, but I'm just asking. I'll make a move that you can.
The, you wanted to wait on this, so you got further information about this program or what's taking place. I think if there's information that Mr. Kaplan wants to bring forth, it could be something, he can bring forth the information in a two-week period before our next meeting. So you'll be looking, we'll.
We had a meeting with somebody between then.
No, he'll, if he's got a set of information that he wants to address to this, fine, but not now. Because if we do it, do it here in two weeks. Bring, you give him time to do it, just like you give the rest of the board time to look at what this program is.
If I don't get a second.
We are out of order in the audience. There is discussion between Commissioners, please.
I mean, I go with my motion. I'd like to hear what he has to say, because I may never have an opportunity to get that information before the next meeting, if it's something important, whether it's relevant or not.
You have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and second, additional discussion.
We've got the information sitting here, so.
Commissioner Peterson?
Nancy?
You have a motion from Commissioner View to recognize Mr. Kaplan and talk. You have Mr. Melner who recognizes it. Recognizes, not recognizes it.
That's a good statement.
Is that a new term I just invented? I'm sorry.
Yep, I love it.
Additional discussion. Mr. Peterson?
I think that two weeks should be plenty of time if Mr. Commissioner View and Commissioner Melner would like to talk to Kaplan, that that shouldn't be that difficult to do in two weeks and get his side of it, for any of us that might want to talk to him, actually. And that we can bring this up at the next meeting.
Commissioner View, I see the wheels rolling, go ahead.
The wheels are rolling. I, I'm trying to be polite here, but this would also be in the public realm, what he has to say. And I think that's important for the whole public to hear it. And that, because the whole public isn't going to get a hold of this gentleman. And right now, he can make a statement that might help clarify us to move forward.
Your point is taken. Mr. Baron, anything? And duly noted.
I think if the Board wanted further information, then the next two weeks, we give you the opportunity to get further information. The decision.
You are out of order in the audience. Let the man speak, please.
Any, as far as public discussion, it'll be discussed in front of the public in two weeks.
Actually, it can be discussed for three minutes in front of the public today.
Yeah.
You have a motion, a second. All those in favor of bringing Mr. Kaplan up right now signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's two of you. Three voted in negative of it. He'd be able to speak on it during general public comment.
Oh, but you said, you didn't say.
The three, I do apologize. You have two to the aye, three to the nay.
You didn't ask, you didn't.
No, well, I assumed if you didn't vote for the aye.
No, but you still need to ask.
Very good, Mr. View.
Well, they might sustain.
All those in favor of not recognizing this signify by saying nay.
Nay.
One, two, three. All right, very good. Item six, well, you've got general public comment. We have closed session with legal counsel, but we will do general public comment prior to this. So you have three minutes to speak during general public comment. Please address the Board. Let us know who you are and where you're from, and we'll go from there.
Don't use your three minutes.
Joe Kaplan, Ford River Township, also Chair of the Delta Conservation District. With an outcome of 800 voters, of which I got 74% of the vote. Pretty good.
The mic's not working.
What do we have to do to do the mic?
Try the button on this, sir. Tap it, see if it's on. There it goes.
I want to make sure you get to hear what I have to say.
Don't make it to three minutes, make them have the listening.
No, 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 I can do it in three minutes.
Please be quiet in the audience. You are out of, you're out of order. That's your first warning. No, I'm sorry, sir, I'm not going to be bullied. Please come to order. I'm not asking that much. You'll get your three minutes in its entirety.
Oh, I understand.
That's it. We're not going to have people calling in from the audience. When he's speaking, please be quiet. Thank you, take your three minutes.
I think on February 3rd, well, first of all, I'd like to say that when Mitch Cucci came up and addressed the Board, you didn't motion for him to do that, you just brought him up. So I don't know where the consistency is there. There is none. You don't motion to bring people up. This Commission can recognize someone to come up and speak for them. You don't have to do a motion. And Bob Baron, I am really surprised, because you are relaying details of a private conversation that happened in our office. And I'll tell you exactly what happened, since you're calling out me and our technician, our MEAP technician. On February 3rd, Steve Wery presented a proposal to put in a parking lot in a pavilion at OB Fuller Park. And I asked the county administrator for that map, and it got lost in the shuffle, understandable, and then I foyed for it. So I think it took 20 days to get it. When I got it, I realized it's exactly the same one that came out of the Conservation District like two years ago. So I asked our MEAP person, hey, did you make this map? And who asked for this map? And guess what? It was Roy Mattson. It was Steve Wery, but then it was actually Roy Mattson. And maybe Bob Peterson? So you want, and so I started asking about the program. And I said, I want to know what the county is doing. The county's enrolled in this MEAP program, I want to know why. And you know what her response was to me? Her response to me, if it was you guys, would have got her fired, insubordination. But you know what? I respect my staff. I do. I respect my staff, I respect my manager, and I respect their ability to say, you know what, Joe? I don't feel comfortable giving it to you, because there's confidentiality issues. And I said, please, go ahead and vet them. And so she did. She called the MDA rep, MDA person, the State has to do it. And I started saying, you know what? I'm going to follow up myself. And what I got is, yeah, as the administrator, as an elected official, there is no confidentiality between a technician and the person who's elected to be in charge of this. The confidentiality comes on me, that when I realize that information, that I don't just disclose it like you just did. That's a weak, what you did is weak. Because our staff has confidentiality, so I don't know how you even got that information, because that was an internal conversation. And it's a shock to have it here. Yeah, your lands are enrolled in MEAP. Yeah, it's the first time, and I'm sure you got it from Roy Mattson. Because I hope you didn't get it from her, because that would have been insubordination. But you know what? That's okay. Because sometimes staff people make mistakes. And that's okay. But as a Commissioner, I can tell you that I had conversations with the State, I'm waiting for information. I have not disclosed a damn thing about your program. You've disclosed way more than I ever would. And you sit there in that seat, it's ridiculous what you do. All you're doing, and you too, oh, look at that smirk. You're just saying, oh, you guys are grasping for.
Point of order.
No.
It's attacking, attacking Commissioners. Point of order.
I have it. There's no point of order. No.
Thank you, sir. Sir, you don't run this meeting. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and you know what? You don't.
You are out of order, sir.
Order to redress the government.
Come to order, please.
He has an allegation against me.
Leave the room, sir, if you refuse to come to order. Please come to order or leave the room.
I want to be recognized, because he made an allegation that I disclosed confidential information.
You have been recognized, but you're over your time, sir.
Yeah, whatever.
Thank you, sir. All right, we do have general public comment. Three minutes.
Williams, Ford River Township. I am absolutely, look at me, Bob Peterson.
I don't have to look at anybody. Point of order. I'm listening.
Excuse me, can we have a.
You're out of order, madam. You. I will, I'll get to you as soon as I can. Duly noted, I heard you first, sit down, please. We need you to go into the microphone. I understand it's difficult. Madam, or leave the room. In order to address that, and what I was trying to do is tell you to wiggle the mic or move a little bit closer to it. You'll have three unabated minutes. And I apologize for the technical problems you're running into.
Want one of our mics, Ashley? For temporary.
I apologize for your inconvenience. We're working on it in the audience, and I apologize for your inconvenience. But I can't have everybody going off at once, or we'll have chaos. Brandon, take a look at it. There you go.
It was me.
Oh. It was you?
I was checking my.
Hello, 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 hello? Can you guys hear me? Can anybody hear me?
Thank you. Please proceed.
I don't know that it's working.
We'll start the time over again.
I don't know that this microphone is working, but I am talking louder.
Would you, would you like to come down here and stand down here and just talk through my mic?
When she does start the time over again, please. Sorry for your inconvenience again.
Chris Williams, Ford River Township. I have heard so many times that we need to get along, we need to stop all this bickering, we need to stop attacking each other. My God, what in the hell is going on with you three? Seriously? I mean, it should have been absolutely clear that a person who, Bob Baron, what, what do you, what do you, Bob, or Dave Moyle, what, what do you need to, what's so important right now that you can't, you can't like, address the public? I'm here speaking to you, I want you to hear me. I cannot understand how you, as three Commissioners, would not allow a person to come up and talk about an accusation as grand as what Bob Baron brought with you. That is absolutely, it's like, it's like Commissioner 101. People address an accusation like that. You have no idea. You have a one-sided conversation that you have had with someone, I don't know who it is, you've had with someone, that is not the person who is being accused. If that isn't tyranny, if that isn't your absolute tyrannical behavior, I don't know what is. But you are the worst Commissioners I have ever experienced in my entire life.
Thank you. Anybody else, general public comment? General public comment. If we can't get you here, we'll get you here. Bonnie, go ahead and use that Bob's microphone.
Good evening, Bonnie Hockla. Okay, what I'd like to talk about is the high cost of early voting. If you have any idea, it was 45 million to do early voting. So that's $270 about per vote. Correct me, Nancy, if I didn't get the numbers right.
It was 270.
You really should address this, don't you? During your comments?
So there's. No, it was $270 for voters in Delta County. The 45 million is so far what the Secretary of State has asked for to cover the early voting. So I don't know what it is statewide. Right, okay, so, point being, the point being is that when we voted on Proposal Two, I think a lot of people did, had no idea of the cost of this proposal. And if people would have known the cost of the proposal, weighing, and weighing in how many people are usually, are actually utilizing this, they would say no. And so therefore, for any future voting things or any petitions that you may sign, I would. any future voting things or any petitions that you may sign, I would highly recommend that you read the back or all the fine print involved because you might be signing things that you don't really know and wouldn't sign if you had read all the fine print. And one more thing for early voting is it would be nice if we could improve our elections and make them more secure, shorter. One day would be nice, as our Constitution provided for. And if we would look at the Constitution, it would be one day in person, paper ballots, people counted, proper chain of custody, and registered voters only voting. No dead people, please. So that would be my request, that we look at elections and verifying our elections because actually, your right to vote is one of your most important rights that you have. And we do live in a constitutional republic. Yes, actually, we do. Actually, we do. You may say democracy, but democracy is what is eating away at our constitutional republic. So inform yourselves. Thank you very much. And commissioners, hang in there. Civility may return. We're hoping for it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. General public comment, please. General public comment, please.
Sandy Sovee, Ford River Township. And I have a couple of things. Number one, I didn't think that we were allowed during public comment to ask questions of people. So that was something that should depend on. And another thing is, it's very frustrating when there are two commissioners that don't get the information ahead of time, and obviously the other three do, and know all about what's happening to the things that get added to the agenda. And it's very obvious, just so you know. And I have good news for the Second Amendment people that are here, for the Second Amendment sanctuary county resolution. I spoke to all three of the recall candidates about this because there's a rumor going around that they are going to eliminate this as fast as they can get into the commission. And it's not true. I called Kelly Vangenhoven. She has no interest in eliminating it. I spoke to Matt Jensen. He has no interest in eliminating it. I spoke to Myra Crowsdale. She has no interest in eliminating it. So I just wanted to clear up the rumor. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please. General public comment.
Semadit, Escanaba. Many things are not going well in Michigan, but one of them is really bothering me. The people who walk into our land illegally, freely, and recklessly. That's my biggest concern these days. The president and federal government set up welcoming rules for them. Plus, our Michigan governor is asking our own citizens to give place and food to them in exchange for their labor. In Delta County, some liberal voters may like this idea, but most of us conservative retirees and middle working class, we don't. Many families are having hard enough time keeping their budget balanced without having another mouse to feed. I would like our county commissioners to take the necessary steps for blocking the way for illegal aliens. No job offers, no hotel rooms, or any kind of housing, no tents in parks or in fairgrounds, neither on the sidewalks. We need to know who has the authority to return the illegal aliens immediately when a bus or an airplane brings them in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please. Please.
I think I can talk long enough. I find it amusing, other than not working for the Conservation District, that somebody gets accused of something, and they want to come up and speak. If you've watched every meeting of this board, am I not accused every single time from someone from the public? Every time. And I heard two things tonight. When Mr. Kaplan got up and talked about Fuller Park, Mr. Mattson said $800,000, and then this, and then this, and then this. Yeah, those were issues. But it wasn't 800,000, by the way, just the septic itself. But we were in charge then, the other district, and also they made me in charge. So I looked at every Bluman thing and everything that we're going to do. There was also about another 30 issues that came of that. And nobody knew about the 30-year-old agreement. Once we found that out, obviously, we fixed it. And my only part in this that I heard here tonight was I was asked by a commissioner on, can you provide the old map, which was put together when I was with the Conservation District in the old board, two years ago, or a year and a half ago. I said, I didn't put that map together. The meat tech did. I said, I will check if the meat tech has that. Because Mr. Kaplan well knows, I don't have the district computer anymore. I'm not even interested in that anymore. Trying to stay out of it. But I can drug into it constantly. So I did call Holly, and I said, do you have the old map? And she said, yes. I said, well, obviously, you can still help the county because they're meat. You're the technician. Could you get a hold of Steve Wery? And they did. And they changed a little bit of things on that map. And I believe the county has both maps. So you could look, there's been some changes because of wetland issues and things like that. And that was my part. And I'm going to keep doing that for a long time. And to sit up here, yeah, flip me off, Joe. And so, so up here, you got three minutes. I'm willing to do it three minutes. I noticed at the end of Mr. Kaplan's, he should be very proud being chairman of the Conservation District, and get up here and act the way he does, and go past this three minutes. Where they have the same type of rules at the Conservation District, of course, I think they moved it to five, now it's back to three. I don't really know. But anyway, that was my part of it. And I will continue to do that as long as I'm out. If I know where to send somebody to a Conservation District, and that is a program that is very, very confidential, but after hearing this and hearing some other things through the grapevine, if it was said by the chairman of the Conservation District to an employee that to work with them, you have to notify me first, or the manager, and because that is terrible, and it's totally wrong.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. General public comment.
Hi, my name is Liz Fitzharris. I live in Escanaba. And as a member of the community, I'm getting tired of this pissing contest between the Conservation Board, Rory Mattson, and three commissioners. I mean, it's just embarrassing. And I think not only me, but probably a majority of the people in the county are tired of it, too. Everything should just be above board. It shouldn't be hearsay. Somebody heard this or heard that through the grapevine. I think you just need to act in a professional manner. That's what you've been elected to do. And it's no surprise to me that some of you are being recalled, or attempted to be recalled. And in terms of early voting, I believe this is the first election where it was ever in practice. So, and it's an off-election. I mean, it's not one that's going to get a huge amount of turnout. And possibly, as this goes on, more people will be aware of it. I know they got postcards, but I'm sure they didn't know exactly what that meant. So I don't think we should just throw that out the window because everything cost, you know, it was more expensive this time. As time goes on, I'm hoping it will be more cost-effective, and more people will be able to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment. All right, we have to go into closed session. We will go into the next room. You're welcome to stay here. I need a motion to go into closed session. Somu. We have to go into closed session to discuss Corporate Counsel's opinion and to discuss his recommendations. Under subsection H of Michigan Compiling Law, and I don't have the law number in front of me.
It's the Open Meetings Act.
Under subsection H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act.
Act 267 of 1976.
267 of 1976. We will... All right, you supported it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Going into closed session. We'll be back in a second, or in a minute. Do you want to use the bathroom first, gentlemen?
We didn't do roll call.
Yeah, we did roll call, the board. I move, Commissioner, if you seconded roll call, please, clerk.
Melner.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yep.
And Moyle.
Yes. We'll be back in a moment. Yes. We'll be back in a moment.
Okay.
But it's like weird. But it's like, it's your private information. In that program? Well, that's what it's like. And there are more, and I do know this. There's, well, I... They are from their gas. It's like a candle is burning. And you know, like Joseph said, it's a foundation between him and the staff. Why isn't your... Yeah, really. How did they get strong? Like, if you can figure out that... I don't know. I don't know. Move on this, so I can watch the break. For a murder, would I get Janice's call? They're right here. It's like forty people. It just points to me. Wow, you guys are amazing. Should they say that? You should ask yourself that. Why every time you're asking? I think right now, he did. I'm gonna get that. I know he's a clerk. This is supposed to be a five-month meeting, and three other persons. It's just kind of the status quo. They do it, they express it, stuff. No information whatsoever. Yeah, exactly. You know, but like, what I said, when I said that, it's, it's, it's... They don't need, you know. And that, but just squeeze, like, why not? Why not? Not, why not? Absolutely. Not that I'm giving, that was exciting. Yeah. That they won't put...
That's the state, you understand? I go, outside, and we go.
You're not even talking to the rest of them. No, it's white, man. I think you could, you could actually... You're still that chance, okay, crazy. What is this, really? Oh, okay. Boy, am I... Now I don't know.
Story. They saw. It's fun.
You know what I'm saying?
You're crazy.
It's kind of a little, don't, don't, but...
We like... He just crashed one today.
It is. Well, no, it's what I thought it was. Oh. It's not what I was, it's not what I was... And since she goes now, and I said, what, what do I need to... How wait? I feel, I've never done this before. I mean, it's so obvious. This whole thing, yeah. So much water, water. There is a lot of... Wow. Yeah, I was seller. Sold it. And then they, so they jump inside. And they, somebody that I knew. That's what this guy wants to, so I had to... And it would say. Except the person that I sold it to was trying to play the game, and then like, well, we... I hope that someone can scramble this out, because they, like, flew up the... Where they managed to... It was somebody, they got about sixteen, just got the car. Yeah, they just... And they're like, so please, either you send us something, or, or pay us a hundred and fifty dollars. I'm like, well, but at this point, they had it for like five years, and I'm like, well, is this something by name? Then, I just come out, and I just grab it. Yeah, I'm like, what? And they're like, well, then, so-and-so wants storage fees. I'm like, well, tell me where is it? It is, y'all, go, tell us and tell us. It was like, yeah. So it was, it was scary for me. For the first time. Yeah, no, we asked the place, right. Well, they had the title, they didn't want to register, so they were gonna get the... They, you know, have... Yeah. Well, this person was just somebody I knew. Chrolling out. The frogs. So then they called me up, and went with the team. Somebody who lived in... So I had like, called the secretary, same as, my first employer, got the second title. And then I called them off, and I'm like, so which one's your title? And they're like, why do we just... And I'm like, well, they've got one, and I've got one. They were like, what's the name? They were like, just fill it out, just like the other one. What is the name, so we can select? I wanted to... I didn't, I thought it was... And I just, anyway. Well, they, they also said that the... They'll give you that license, but you would say, if you're already playing this game, I'm not... Things to be... After that, it's very... But it was like... And they were like, oh, no, we just, you know. They tried to be all friends, until they realized that it's gonna end up fighting. And then, it's like, hey. Time, you know, it's... It's, 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 we're not on the moral high ground. Just, just hold it. That's why this whole, the whole... You know, I don't think, well, he doesn't even have... God, this is... And they get... I'm really, that is the... No, um, same. I just, I just got it, I got it, this girl. Doesn't mean that it was... She told me, like, yes. I was like, I was like, I'm like, I'm like... There was something that I can't remember. I basically, I rented the time, I have, I just... And, um, so there was something like, I don't know. But, as soon as I'm like, well, tell me where this is, and I was like, here. And she's like, well, then they're gonna want to... So I'm like, no, no, no. There's no way that those two numbers are exactly the same. No, no, not at all. I, I had, um, stopped, I contacted... It was... I don't... Yeah. I sold it to someone, I didn't... Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't the only, I, they, but they did, but it was kind of surprising. Yeah, yeah. So I was like, this is true. Don't ever... Yeah, I, I can't... Even though that was terrible. He... Went down, went, 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 went down. What's it done? You can't lift this. Yeah. Have to put a tire punch. But I just, I was around ten minutes or so. I'm happy, I'm happy. Good. The sea, oh, the sea of fish. The sea of fish is all... I, I didn't like that. I worked you on it. You don't have any... That's wonderful. Yeah. They're still good to me. Like, so is this gonna... I'm like, that's the lawyer. Like, that's the lawyer. Yeah. When, when I found out that my... I was breaking up the serial, and I'm like, yeah, he's thinking about it. That I forgot to pay. Why, why is it, it's a trailer? Oh, it's, it's not, it's, it's a whole... Yeah. Kind of takeout. Exactly. High tempo. Kind of the Alan's part.
I'm sorry, everyone, I'm joined technically, we're in...
I think I'm saying the one, the other one here. Right. Right. And that was... You got... Yeah. I was just surprised, when I, when I... Yeah. Yeah. I, I was in my early twenties. It was because of the... And I was like... I got, I got... Yeah. It's a, that's, I would, I would never... And I was just... I knew it. Yeah. Yeah. There was a girl, and the end, what happened was, the girl, she was... So, uh, she, she got it, and I'm actually, yeah, I'm like... And, and she didn't know what happened to her. She was, and then I'm like, you want to scrap it out? No, I got it. And so, I'm like, alright, fine, and I think I actually, I just... Probably been crazy, but she didn't... And I was, then I... And, uh... I wish you would be waiting back, I would like, like, so... She, she... What, what's the whole thing like? I get some, after, after, after... He was serious, and all, at the end of our... I just, like, just... Older and strange. And so, that's how I got it, I'm like, every year, I got... So weird, so, I got it, I just, the car, like, got it, like, three months ago, then, I got the bill for that one. I know, yeah, I got that. I will see him, who was a year... I'm just inspired, it was just like... Yeah, it's great. But, this is like, never... Oh, yeah, that's my house, right? Yeah. Anything you've ever... But anyway, I told... That's, that's been, that's been the one. He doesn't know. So, he never paid for it. I've got a... Like, it's like, one... Yeah. It's like, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, it was just a, um, about, about, about... Bike, 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 yeah. And there's one, they called it, like, twenty-five, because it kept getting repossessed. And finally, like, ended up, I don't remember, and so... Like, it's, 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 like, eight years, or twenty-five. And then... It was, it was, it was like, coming back to the dealer. And they'd sell it again, and they'd register, then they lose another, and they wouldn't pay for it, so actually... No. I, I might have liked it, yeah. And, um, in the, where he's, and the, 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 the... Remember what I, what I said? I said, yeah, we have, we have... That, that was nice. That can, that was... Yeah, we got everything, so I believe it's... But, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't... Yeah, you know, well, he shot... Well, no, that was a lot, that, that was a lot. I actually bought it, too. Here's a picture. I don't care, just... Give me a, you know, whatever, you can... But it was, John says that it was... I mean, banks, nothing's...
Hello, CNN. CNN, something...
I didn't understand. Nobody wants to... We have our house submitted. And the only way to get through it... Back end of all... Yeah. So, I'm like... And so, yeah. Well, now, we're going to take... You are... They come here offering. They sure... I would have had yourself... And somebody was like... Because I'd actually... It was just... It was just more than... More than I wanted to back. So, I was like... I was like, "This is stupid." It was like that. How's it get in this highway? They don't have there anyway. You know, and I was standing out, talking there at the ballpark. So, I was like, "Really?" And it's like, "They don't..." And yeah, he's looking for an address. Well, don't ever count on it. No. I don't like that. How do all these other people count? So, I ended up having like... I'm like... Funny thing to go through. And I had no idea. One of the people was standing like, you know, he was just like awesome. And he just stood up there. And he could just see I was... Sorry, because I was like... And I was just like, "So," I was like, "What's this thing?" And I was watching. We didn't send it about two days. Yeah. And I don't think so. Waiting to find out what they say. I suppose I could... He was just coming around. Some people online. And this does not...
We'll come back in the session after using the bathroom. Please excuse us. Please, can you turn on the microphones? I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson, to come out of closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are out of closed session. We made no voting. Made no decisions. We did, however, discuss under Michigan Open Meetings Act, Michigan Compiled Law, Section fifteen, point two-six-eight-eight-h. Attorney client opinion. The issue was the investigation by Counselor Graham on the airport issue. We have before us three options. No decisions were made. I will illustrate the three options for the public's benefit. Commissioners, you may weigh in at that point. Option A would be to do nothing. Option B would be to bring suit, civil suit against the previous airport manager. Option C would be to simply refer this on to the FAA for further investigation and their consideration. Those are the three options. I'm going to ask you to remain silent, please, while the commissioners discuss this. Start off, I don't support suing anybody. I don't support doing anything retributive, moving the county forward and making sure we have what we need. In essence, comes down to protecting the entity. And getting somebody back or trying to make somebody's life miserable, that is not part of protecting the entity. So, I for one do not support bringing suit against Andrea Newmolenen. Gentlemen.
I would support that. I'm... Stomach for that either, but I do support the... To protect the entity that is the county. I do support turning this over to the FAA for further consideration.
Commissioner View.
Yes. Basically, we need to protect both the airport and the county. And I would move that we do turn it over to the next level of the FAA and get their recommendations.
We have a motion by Commissioner View.
I'll support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion. Mr. Melner.
The only thing I would like to say additionally is this is not going to be... Any information that was given under this session we had can be released to the public, but in the end, everything will be transparent.
After the FAA, as you say, sir. Good point.
In the end, I just want people to know, don't be talking to us or... You can talk to us, but don't try to get information out of us because we're...
They can try that too, but whether it works or not. Okay, but your point is clear. We cannot go public with any of the information based on counsel's recommendations until the FAA has...
Completed.
Either issued a statement or rejected it, filed whatever. Mr. Barron, you have a question or a comment?
Oh, I think the... What we were briefed on indicates that this is absolutely the right thing to do.
Clerk Presrocky, I would like a roll call on this, please. And the motion would be to turn this over to the FAA as recommended by Civil Attorney Graham.
Commissioner Melner?
Yes.
Commissioner View?
Yes.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Moyle?
Yes. That will be... Administration, please contact Inspector General of the FAA and pass on Attorney Graham's information in... And also give a copy to Mr. Randstadler. If you, you know, that is appropriate. But we cannot make public comment about it beyond what we've done.
You want to let this go to where? To the airport manager?
I don't think you can.
Oh, you can't do that? Am I correct in that assumption?
I'm going to bring it to the FAA.
All right, bring them straight.
I don't think anyone else should be involved outside of...
I am duly corrected and chastised.
No.
Okay, very good. Just submit it to the Inspector General of the FAA. Any other comments or questions on this, please? Very, very good. Mr. Randstadler and his assistant manager, I think, as noted, have done an outstanding job. And I believe the persons or the taxpayers of this county have served well. Commissioners' comments? Mr. Barron? Oh, Mr. Peterson, sorry.
Well, many things have been mentioned a bunch here tonight. And running around Fuller Park, looking for a place to put in a parking lot. I went out there at the request of Steve Weary to help him and look at what the project that was going on. Also, I felt that it was my responsibility, like a lot of things, to know what's happening in the county. We went, moved ahead and we had Eagle come out and look at it. We're taking the right steps. We're doing the right things. This would have actually been done a year and a half or two years ago. We were trying to do it. And Joe Kaplan and New District Board stood in the way. They wanted only to have the picnic area over where the campground was. We tried to... We brought it forward. We actually brought it to the... To Scarlett from the DNR. She thought it was a great idea. But we ran up against a lot of... Not from the majority of the public. Since this has come to light that we're going to do this, I've had nothing from anybody that contacted me thinks it's a great idea. They are excited about it. We are moving ahead. We are taking the proper steps. And it's going to wind up being a great addition, not only to this county, but to Fuller Park. Christine Williams said at either the last meeting or the meeting before that the area that we're putting it in is all wetland, not by a long shot, not even close. Across the road from where the picnic area is going in, yeah, that's all wetland or a majority of it's wetland. Where the picnic area is going in, it is not. There are some pockets of wetland in it. There'll be no problems working around it. I didn't run out there on my own looking for a place to put in a parking lot. I've got better things to do with my time, but when I was asked by Steve Weary, our department head, to go out with him, I obliged. I think I... That's part of my job as a commissioner. Whenever anybody from the county asks me for help, whether it be the Fair Board, whether it be the airport, whether it be the parks, I try and get in and help as much as I can. Today, as a matter of fact, I was asked by the Fair Board to attend a meeting at... At the Escanaba Town Hall or Town Courthouse, whatever it is.
City Hall.
City Hall, there you go. Thank you. I couldn't find the word. I was asked to attend that by Vicky Mishoff from the Fair Board. That is in consideration of a project on Ninth Avenue. Wasn't something that I had to do. Wasn't in my description as a commissioner, but I did it. And I'll continue to do that. I do not micromanage, just for anybody that's made that accusation. I go out when I'm asked and I help. I have never told anybody in this county that's an employee to do this or do that. I go, I show up, I say, "Can I help you with anything?" I've gone out to the airport and spoke with the grounds crew. First time I did that, they said that was the first time they ever had a county commissioner come out and talk to them. And they appreciated it. This picnic area, we're doing the right things. We've brought in Eagle. They have looked at it. And it's going to be all done through permit. And when it's all done, it is going to be a beautiful picnic area. And I will help everything I can, even if they ask me to get a hammer and apron out and go out and pound. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. View?
Couple things. I say that every time. Well, first off, I want to thank the board and administration for helping me understand a lot of decisions I have to make and being patient with me for giving me information that I need to make the best decisions in the county. It's very valuable. And I'm glad you don't think I'm causing trouble. I'm hoping you don't anyways. But we can leave here and still smile at each other, I guess.
Sometimes you cause trouble. I bought Melner a drink last time.
Yeah, well, I don't drink. But I want to make a comment. We have a full task force opioid buoyet board. If you look at the communications sent and received, all the people are listed in there. I'm waiting on when we're going to start our first inaugural meeting. I'm sure Ashley's going to have something coming forward soon, but I just wanted to let people know that we're moving forward with that. I'm also looking forward... I'd like a forest update. I think we're getting pretty close to... The deadline is, what, March thirty-first or something? I would like to see what we submitted to them. Did we submit something to them?
Not yet, because the board's got to approve it.
Well, that's why I'm getting worried about it.
No, we're working on it.
We're working on it. We haven't even talked about it. That's... And that's, you know, I don't know if I'd have something to add to it or... I'm not willing to add anything unless it is a board decision and we have something ahead of time to look at. I'm just throwing it out there. Also, I was looking forward to getting a list of all the grants... Also, I was looking forward to getting a list of all the grants that we had in the past year, not, not just since you took over, the new administration took over, but prior, so I can see that we're staying on board with applying for them.